Hello, I would like to call this meeting to order. Our October 19th regular board meeting at 7:00 PM. If everyone could please stand for the pledge allegiance. Can we give these students a big hand? Alright, I would like to welcome most definitely our students from Pleasantly Elementary and our students from Lee Summit North and then also our parents and everyone that is here and viewing online. At this time, if I can have an adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Buck for his superintendent report.
Welcome, everybody. Glad to see a packed house. I know we're gonna have a little bit of singing here in a little bit. I'm excited about that. So, a couple of things on superintendent report today. First off, I want to thank everyone who participated in the English Language Development Family Night we had recently. We had, they put together a recipe book, which is just awesome. My favorite part of, I couldn't go to that night. The photographer went, said it took her 35 minutes to find a repeat country as she went around. And I know there's a lot of people in this room that went to that. So, thank you to everybody that went to that and thank you to our staff for hosting that. Want to let you know that the school district has opened up the opportunity to apply for the SEAL by Literacy Pathway Awards, which are for first, third, fifth, and eighth graders. So, please look for that on our website. Want to brag about our staff. They set up with a one-site vision clinic located at Kansas City University campus. And we have 52 kids ranging from elementary through high school. Visit, get a free exam, and many of them went away with free glasses. And if you didn't see the social media posts, the smiles on their face were just amazing. So, thank you to our staff for finding that and organizing that. We just had today our third annual Elected Officials Day. So, I want to thank the city officials, the county officials, and five state reps who came to that and got to tour Great Beginnings Paradise Park. And we also recently had our Lee Summit Education Foundation Breakfast. We had 180 individuals out at Summit Lakes Middle School. So, thank you to everybody that attended that. We also, this Tuesday night, want to thank the Board of Education and the 15 individuals that came to our first Community Conversation Series. We did a World Cafe over at MIC Tuesday night. We were there till 10 o'clock, some of us, so that was awesome. Realtor/Developer Breakfast is gonna be two weeks. So, if you know or are a Realtor or a developer, a builder, we're having that 9:00 to 10:30, October 30th, over at the MIC campus. And then I want to hit some things on sports, which are not typed on here. Girls softball and golf, our seasons are over. Want to congratulate those teams. We have one tennis team still going. LSN, the Bronco, Lady Broncos, are in the Final Four. So, good luck to the Lady Broncos being in the Final Four. They will bring home a trophy, because the top four teams always bring home a trophy. Volleyball, districts start tonight. They're going on right now. And Lee Summit West is the number one seed. In football, this is week nine, so the playoffs are after this week. So, good luck to all three of our high school football programs. So, that concludes my superintendent's report. And then we'll move on to 3.01, which is the School Spotlight. The first one will be Pleasantly Elementary. And I believe, there's Leslie Mott. Dr. Mott, do you want to introduce who you brought with us? And show us a little bit about what's happening in your building at Pleasantly Elementary.
Alright, if we would have our choir come and stand behind us. Good afternoon, I'm Leslie Mott, I'm the principal at Pleasantly Elementary. And we are excited to be here. As the choir is getting prepared, I would like to have an individual from our school to come up and say a few words, so that we can recognize, because we have a special recognition. Recognition, excuse me. Louis, would you come on up, please? And he's gonna say, use his big voice.
Greetings. My name is Louis and I'm a fifth grade student at Pleasantly Elementary. I'm here to tell you something good about an amazing PLE volunteer who is being recognized. You see, I know this volunteer is amazing, because I know them firsthand. This volunteer has been very helpful at organizing events at PLE. This volunteer has helped put together soccer goals. This volunteer has also donated prizes to different events. Do you know that this volunteer is my mom? I would like to recognize my mom, Ashley Lund, for her hard work, countless hours serving and doing so many things to make PLE a great place for me, my brother, and the kids at PLE. Mom, please come up and be recognized.
If we could have the board, don't run away yet. We have the Board of Education come up and have a photo with you. And Ms. Bergen will come up and take the picture. So, board, can you head to the center and get a picture with our Volunteer of the Year?
And we have Ms. Ella, who's gonna introduce our choir.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Ella Morrell, and we are proud to present our PLE Tiger Choir. Tonight, we will be singing "The Door of Music." It will not be very long, but we hope you enjoy it anyway. Let's give it up for our Tiger Choir.
Come on, can we stand on our feet and give these kids a round of applause? We'll give it a few minutes before we introduce Dr. Collins. Alright, Lee Summit North gets to try to follow that. So, I want to introduce Dr. Tim Collins, Principal of Lee Summit North High School, to give not only the presentation, but also do the Volunteer of the Year from Lee Summit North.
Hang on, how about that? We're gonna do our best to follow that. They did an absolutely outstanding job. When it comes to Volunteer of the Year for Lee Summit North, and when it comes to a comprehensive high school in our district, we can't operate without a ton of volunteers. And that includes parents and community members. And when it came to trying to select a Volunteer of the Year, this man's name that's standing next to me, Damian Cooper's name, came up multiple times with our staff, with our students. He is so involved in what's going on at Lee Summit North. I could stand up here and just brag about him for a very long time. But I felt like our staff needed to be heard tonight, and that's what I'm gonna be doing. I'm gonna be relaying some of their messages about Damian, our Volunteer of the Year. So, to start with, this is from our head football coach, Jamar Mozy. Damian has a huge, has been a huge addition to our football staff. He is the chaplain and our life coach of our players. He makes it a point to be around our players all the time. He goes the extra mile to build strong relationships with them. All the players have high respect for Damian. Damian gives a motivational word to our players before every game, on every game day. He settles the team down. He puts everyone in the right frame of mind to win. He is greatly appreciated by the Bronco football program. Another coach of ours, another head coach of ours, Ryan Kelly, our boy and girl soccer head coach. Damian has been volunteering with our boys and girls soccer programs for a few years now. And the impact he has had on our players lives, on our players' lives is amazing. Damian comes to each training match and match with enthusiasm for the game. Life and the players is absolutely infectious when he gets around them and helps to drive our players. He has a huge heart to help others and especially youth. Damian has been the coach, mentor, motivator, counselor, and friend to many of our players, and they will remember the impact he has made on them for the rest of their lives. Two more. Robin Gray, one of our counselors at Lee Summit North. Damian has been so very instrumental throughout Lee Summit North. I'm sure many of us can attest to this fact. I have had the pleasure of working with Damian in several capacities, too many to name. But the main point is that whenever I or we call on him, he shows up every single time. He is here for students, parents, and teachers alike. Most recently, I called Damian to play a significant role in the counseling department, a role that would require a weekly commitment of his time. And again, he didn't hesitate. We have collaborated on so many things that have benefited our students, and he wants to do even more. His passion for people is unmatched. He is literally a godsend to Lee Summit North and Lee Summit. We are blessed to have such a devoted, caring, committed, and loving man of God, using his gifts to be a blessing. He is more than deserving of this recognition. Last one from a teacher before I say a few words about Damian. When we were doing virtual instruction, this is from a teacher, a veteran teacher, Rachel Russell, who's been with us for, since the building's almost been open. When we were doing virtual instruction in the days of the pandemic, Damian led a small group of us through an incredibly impactful small group on Wednesday mornings. This was a safe space to meet with colleagues and tackle tough topics. We talked about our implicit biases. We took a hard look at racism in our larger society and here in Lee Summit. We listened to each other with deep respect. We shared honestly and openly with each other without fear of judgment. We learned a lot about each other, about the world around us. We grew as educators and as human beings. The whole experience helped me make sense of the world that at the time felt chaotic and difficult. Honestly, I'm not sure how I would've made it through the pandemic and virtual instruction without that small group. Damian was a brilliant facilitator for that group. He led from a place of love, and yet, he still challenged us to do some hard work. He gave us homework assignments between weeks that were honestly some of the best professional development in my career. I appreciate his service as a kind, compassionate leader during an incredible, difficult time. And Damian, just from me and from my heart, I have been working with Damian for several years now on various projects at LSN and within the district. We first met because he was a local community member and a pastor, just looking to get involved and to serve our kids at Lee Summit North. We eventually came up with the idea of a getaway party to relieve some stress on our kids prior to final exams, just twice a year. And the students just enjoy that time. They enjoy the games, the giveaways, the DJs, all the activities that they get to do. But beyond just this, Damian has mentored, tutored, mentored and tutored students our avid program, coached and volunteered for our soccer program, mentors our football players every week, as you heard from Coach Mozy, and character-building exercises for them as well. He has worked with our staff around social justice issues and provided professional development for our staff in the past as well. Damian loves to serve Lee Summit North and our district and our schools as a whole. He is a primary force behind Unite the Summit. If you guys don't know what that is, I encourage you to look it up and become involved in that program. It is absolutely amazing. And it is a day organized around community service and fellowship that our community, district staff, and students all participate in. Damian is one of the most genuine and kind people I have ever had a chance to work with or meet, and I can't thank him enough for what he has done for our students, staff, and our school community as a whole. Damian, congratulations on being named Lee Summit North Volunteer of the Year. It so very well deserves, sir. Alright, we're gonna move right into our School Spotlight. Tonight, from our School Spotlight, we've got a focus on one of our student leadership groups, our Student Activity and Advisory Council. And I've got two students here that can talk a lot better about this than I can. This is Drew Gray and Addie Lang. And they're gonna be here to explain what this group is. It's all around developing student leadership skills that they have made around that leadership piece and highlight some of the service projects they've been involved with. So, Drew and Addie, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. As Dr. Collins mentioned, my name's Drew, this is Addie, and we are a part of the Lee Summit North Student Activity Advisory Council, otherwise known as SEC. And we are going to tell you a little bit about that today.
Okay, so you might be wondering what the benefits are of a good leadership program. First of all, it's personal growth. And second of all, it reinforces our emphasis on our activity department goals. The acronym we use for that is SALT, which is Sportsmanship, Academics, Leadership, and Life Lessons, and then Teamwork. It also prevents less team discipline. It's teammates holding each other accountable, because we learn how to be better leaders.
Some of the components of our leadership program, our Lunch and Learns, which we will explain more later, we do those once a month. Another thing, our biggest thing, in my opinion, would be our community service projects, which falls under servant leadership, because we believe in order to be a good leader, you have to serve first. And then some leadership workshops that we've done with Mr. Rob Miller and some proactive coaching days where he's came in and talked to us and just kind of gone through some scenarios and just became better leaders from them. So, we really appreciate him for doing those.
Okay, so our Lunch and Learn, we usually call it just a SAC meeting. We meet once a month during lunch for about an hour, we're excused from 5th hour. We start off with an icebreaker, just so everybody can get warmed up to talking. And then we discuss our community service project. Last month, we did a custodian, we cleaned up the football field after a football game for Custodian Appreciation Month. So, after the game was over, the football players and everybody who was at the game and then SAC came and cleaned up the home side field stadium part. And then this month, we're doing Late Night Cookies on Saturday, which is where we make cookies, and we deliver them to like police departments, fire departments, hospitals, and just tell them how much we appreciate them. Then we do our role-play scenarios. Last year, we did an auction where you had a certain amount of money, and there were certain things you could bid on. It was from like how attractive you want your partner to be, and then to like feeding the need and what you could bid on for that. And then we also do our book talk this month. We're reading "The Hard Hat." And so, on our meeting on Wednesday, we talked about, in small groups, each chapter of what we needed to read. And then in the big group, we talked about everything, and everybody just went and shared about what they learned. And then we also do a leadership video discussion. So, our previous meeting, we did a video with Kobe Bryant, and it was talking about how leadership is lonely and how not everybody's gonna like you, but somebody has to hold everybody accountable.
So, more about our book talks. In the past, we've done books from John Wooden, called "The Essential Wooden." We've done "The Leadership Playbook," a personal favorite of mine. "Pound the Stone," which was also a great one. And then this year, like Addie said, we're doing "The Hard Hat." And every year, we just have little book talks about them. They all resolve around leadership, and like they come from different respective sports. Like this year, it's about a lacrosse player who was a great leader and then tragically passed away. "Pound the Stone" was about a kid who at first was playing soccer and then wasn't good enough to make the team, so then he went to tight roping. Yeah, that was an interesting one. So, we read one of these, we've read one of these each year that we've been in SAC. And honestly, they are probably one of the most important things we do in SAC, because they just really help us grow as leaders and kind of get different perspectives on ways to be a leader, so.
And then the two main purposes of servant leadership is the ability to serve creates the opportunity to lead. Learning the importance of helping others and giving back to our community, which clearly is one of the biggest things that we do in SAC, is giving back to our community. And then working together as a group for the good of a common goal, teamwork, and accepting different roles.
So, some of our leadership, servant leadership products, projects that we've done, like Addie mentioned earlier, was the Custodian Appreciation. And then how she said this month, we're doing the Late Night Cookies, where we go and deliver cookies to 24 of our services. And then next month, we have Macho Madness Volleyball, which is a personal favorite, which is where we have a sign-up in the gym, and we have guys and girls participate on volleyball teams to raise awareness for breast cancer. And then Holiday Gift Exchange, we all bring in, so you get paired up with somebody else in SAC. You get to, it's like a get-to-know-you activity. You get to know the person, and then you buy a gift, a children's gift, based on that person, and then we donate that to Coldwater. January is Polar Plunge. That is where we go up to Longview and we take a dip in the lake in January and just try and raise some money. March is Harvesters. We go to Harvesters and we help out however we can. Senior Citizen Prom is a new one. We have not been able to do that one since me and Addie have been in high school, so that will be a fun one. We're gonna host a prom for senior citizens, and all are able to come. So, and May, also a new one, pickleball tournament, because apparently pickleball is popular now. So, yeah, it is up and coming, and we're going to host a pickleball tournament. So, we'll see how that goes.
We are challenged daily to be leaders on our team, in our school, and in our community. Ultimately, we are being asked to make a lasting impact.
When we're laying on our deathbed, you're not gonna worry about how much money you had, how much power you had, how much prestige. You're gonna see that that was all game, that that was all an illusion. The only thing that's gonna matter is the impact you had on other people's lives.
We are all on a separate journey. But the beautiful thing about our life here on this earth is at my funeral, they ain't gonna talk about my success. They're gonna talk about who Nick was and how Nick lived and how Nick loved and encouraged.
Success is incredibly important, but even more important than success, it's having an impact. It's knowing you haven't walked the planet in vain. It's knowing that because you've been here, you've blessed lives, you've developed people, and you have made the world a better place.
The effect you have on others is the most valuable currency there is. Everything you gain in life will rot and fall apart, and all that will be left of you is what was in your heart.
Life is a mirror. And life gives us not what we want, life gives us who we are. When you were born, you cried while the world rejoiced. Live your life in such a way that when you die, the world cries while you rejoice.
So, thank you guys for letting us speak. And if you have any questions, we are here to answer them.
How many people are in the organization?
Thirty.
All I'm gonna, I have a selfish request. Can the Board of Education be on that list for the cookies?
I'm sure we can work something out to get you guys some cookies.
No, I appreciate you all with your presentation on today. Keep up the good work and continue to encourage other students at North and even some of the other schools to implement something of this sort, because we all need to be reminded of having a servant's heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think they followed that up pretty well, Pleasantly Elementary. So, now 4.01, Finance Committee Report. The Dynamic Duo, get to follow that.
I don't know how we follow that. I'm still trying to recover from that video. So, we have our Finance Committee meetings recorded, so unless there are any questions on what we discussed in the Finance Committee meeting, it was very short, because we really don't, we just don't have a lot on the agenda for anything to discuss for decision, and our consent agenda is very short. So, pending any questions. Okay.
Alright, then there's no questions. I just want to just make this note just for the public, and is that the Finance Committee,
And is that the Finance Committee, there was a line in our items for decision for Finance Report. But we're not making a decision on that. And so for the public's sake, you'll see that it's just been added as a separate line in our reports. Because those meetings are obviously open to the public and you can go back and review. And so we'll just go ahead and move to Board Reports, our meetings. And I know last time, Board Member Eslic, I started with you. So I'm gonna start down here with Dr. Johnson for your Board Reports. Say I'm sorry, I'm trying to be fair.
Okay, so I'll be, I'll be short. This was a short month for me. I did Team Lee Summit. Again, I have to agree that that's still my favorite meeting, even above this one. But I like collaborating with the, all of the members that are represented on Team Lee Summit. And we get a lot of good work done. And so just remember to keep promoting the good work and collaboration we're doing. I also attended the Lee Summit Education Foundation Breakfast, which I attended that with some of my other board members. Which was an amazing experience because the internship at Worlds of Fun that is offered made me want to now throw my name in the hat to start an internship for pharmacists and pharmacy technicians. So that was pretty awesome and motivated me to wanna do more. And then, I'm trying to think what else I went, Community Conversations we had two days ago, which was amazing. And there's someone in the audience right now who really made an impact on me, but I know I'm not supposed to talk to the audience. But I wanted to say I really appreciated the conversations that night. And it was the first time I was able to have a conversation that I had that night with this person. And it was enlightening. So I really appreciated that. And I appreciated everyone who came out and I'm looking forward to everyone coming out next year, 2024. Hopefully, if we get to do another one, tell your friends and family. And I tell people all the time, even if you don't have kids or grandkids, you are a taxpayer and your voice is very important. So that was a good time. I cannot think of anything else that I did, so I'm gonna pass it to Regina.
Okay. Well, I have been having a great time with my fellow school, school board members. As far as touring elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. We're learning a lot, I'm learning a lot, and seeing how every school, elementary school is so unique in what it offers and how it's catering to the kids. One that stuck out to me this last time was at Westview, was it West? No, not Westview. It was Prairie View, sorry. Prairie View Elementary has something unique where they are able to reach other students. I think was it St. Louis or Columbia, maybe? I'm not sure. But it was a different city where they had kids that were able to zoom in to for a lesson in LSR 7 School District. So that was really unique to me. Going in and seeing the video screens in the classroom with the teachers. So I was really impressed with that. And then I did attend also the Lee Summit Education Foundation Breakfast. I had a great time with that as well. And then we had the Team Lee Summit meeting and a lot of great things happening there. English Language Learners, I don't know what you would call that, like a cultural festival. It was very, it was very cool getting to know or getting to speak. Okay, the English Language Development Department, Development, something like that. I couldn't get the full name. Family Night. So it had a lot of our students that are not English speaking, or they speak a little English, to come in with their families and have dishes from their countries and also the outfits you might see that they would wear in that country. So I know we got to sit down and speak with a family in particular. And one of the students has been here for four months in the, in the country. And was speaking English pretty well, so I was pretty impressed with that. And then we had Community Conversations, World Cafe event. So I think it was smallish this year, but like Camille said, Dr. Camille said that we were going to hopefully next year have a lot more people that come and let their voices be heard. And then also, we had the Elected Officials Day today at the Great Beginning Early Learning Center, Paradise Park. So it was great to meet with our elected officials and take a tour of the Paradise Park facility. There's so many great changes and there's a lot to be proud of here in LSR 7, so great job, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Murdock.
Just gonna do a list format here, how about that? We had the work session where I just wanna say thanks to the CAC Committee who came out to talk to us about their committee. Went to the Community Conversation, that was fantastic. Do hope that we continue those even two, three times a year, I think would be very wise. CSEP Committee, we had last night. I continue to be amazed with the number of volunteers that we have throughout the district who come out at all times to help us out. We have 40 people or so on that committee and we got a lot accomplished last night. And the Legislators' Day this morning was excellent. We continue to get more and more participation in those, which is proof that we are doing the right thing as we are continuing to move forward. That's it for me, thanks.
Board Member Miller.
Okay, so I'll try to be quick too. I went to Early Education Advisory Board. And that was great because I got to connect with the Great Beginnings staff and also the Parents' Teachers staff. And they're doing some great work collaborating together to make sure that our youngest learners in our community are being served. And it's amazing. They continue to be full, they said, with regards to the people that are coming in for assessments and things like that. I attended the Lee Summit West Parent and Principal Roundtable, which was hosted by the PTSA. Sarah Singh is doing an amazing job at Lee Summit West, hosting all kinds of things. And this was a great opportunity for parents to get to meet the new principal at Lee Summit West. And we were able to just have a great open discussion, so that was great. I got to tour Summit Ridge Academy, wow. That is an amazing place. And you guys know my favorite word is amazing. It was amazing, the work that we're doing there with our students, it's pretty incredible. Citizens Advisory Committee, I attended my first meeting this month. And I loved the collaboration between the community and everybody that came out to have those conversations, so that was great. Got a tour of Great Beginnings. And also, I went to Woodland, Richardson and Prairie View. I just wanna highlight, I was really kind of like that, that video we just saw. My heart was, my heartstrings were pulled at Prairie View. Because they have, I mean, every school has something unique. At Prairie View, they have a pantry that community members and specifically the school community can come out if they need to and get food and get, get coats. And they even had birthday bags. Because if, if you know anything about poverty, you know, one of the things that you, that kids miss out on are birthdays and birthday cakes. So they can have, they have these bags with all the ingredients to make a cake. So I just love, love, love that initiative. And all of the teachers and all the staff, they, they kind of get together. They also have, every month, I believe, they have where all of the students are getting involved in serving the community. And I think again, when you start young, teaching people about serving, I mean, that's just, you know, my heart is just for service. So I just, I love, love, love that. They're making an impact on those young people at a very young age. Community Conversation, as my other board members mentioned, was amazing and I can't wait to have another one. Elected Officials' Day was today. And yeah, I had a great month, so I'll turn it over to Heather.
It's funny, everybody calls it Community Conversations because we advertise it as the World Cafe. And now my husband calls it the International Buffet. So this is what I think of now. So it's no longer World Cafe, it's International Buffet, but we know what it means. I was also there, the whole board was. And I really do hope that again, next time, we advertise how much free pizza we actually had so that we get more people to come. So I look forward to those. Again, I echo Ryan's comment, two to three times a year, that would be fantastic. I also attended the Ed Foundation's Community Breakfast and the Race for the Future, which was well attended, even though it was kind of rainy and gross outside and it was a little cold and I was really underdressed for the weather. But everyone did great. And just from the Ed Foundation's Board, both events were a little shy of their budget, but still very successful from a community support and involvement standpoint, so that's really good to hear. I also attended Lee Summit High School's Team Driven Robotics Team Open House with Board President Sparks. He was also there. I'm not sure if anybody else was there, so if I missed you, sorry. But that was, that's really, it was really great to hear from that team because they were very excited to have their renovated robotics space and have their full team or full, what do they call it, a field? Yeah, the full-size field so that they can replicate a competition. So that was really neat. They were very appreciative of that and it was just really great to see those students operating their robots and just very excited about their program. So I always enjoy interacting with those teams. Had the Board Policy Committee meeting, Finance Committee meeting. Both of those relatively short and not a ton to really report out here that's, that would be of importance. So that's all I have, thanks.
Sorry, you didn't pass it on. Vice, Vice President Foley.
Thank you. All right, I attended the Lee Summit Education Foundation Community Breakfast. I attended MSBA Region Four Fall Meeting, the Board Leadership Meeting. I was a judge in the Lee Summit High School Homecoming Parade. There were some awesome floats full of creativity and spirit. And I also attended the Lee Summit High School Homecoming Game. I took a tour of Woodland Elementary and Summit Ridge Academy, they were amazing. Oh, I also participated in Race for the Future benefiting the Education Foundation. I did not train for the event and I wasn't very fast, but I finished. We know Board Member Eslic is an avid runner and a frequent participant, but I recruited Board Member Miller to join me next year. And I would like to get the rest of you to join as well. I participated in the Community Conversation Event the other night. I do think we should advertise it as dinner with the board because we did have plenty of pizza. And the Elected Officials' Day at Great Beginnings this morning. And that's it.
All right, busy Board of Education. Again, the MSBA original Fall Meeting, that's important because that is one of the qualifications for us to get the Governance Award. And so we obviously met that standard. And I appreciate the Board and then Dr. Shelton filling in for Dr. Buck for that meeting. So that was a great meeting and looking forward us, for us to go to our MSBA Annual Conference, which is November the 2nd through the 4th. Also, to Board Member Eslic's point, the Lee Summit, the Team Driven, the robotics, they were very excited. One of the fascinating pieces that I had, that I, the knowledge that I was able to gain from that opportunity was the fact that our middle school and even elementary kids, they have their own little field too that they're able to operate on. And so I thought that was pretty unique. But then also, the way that these students move when those robots break down. It's like they just know what to do, they go into action. It's almost like going into surgery, the way that they act with those robotics. So I appreciate what we're doing as a district of providing all of our high schools those opportunities and of course, rolling it down to our middle school students also. We also have Board Leadership, Vice President Foley and myself with Dr. Buck. Also, there is a, this is something that's new and I'm, this is an opportunity for me to share it with the Board. One of the desires when I came to, when I became a Board Member with MSBA was when you go to some of the national conferences, they have like affinity groups and things of that nature that helps to support Board Members that are different facets, if it's rural, if it's more urban district, things of that nature. And one of the national organizations is Cube, which is a branch of NSBA. And so one of the things that I know that, that is lacking in MSBA is representation when it comes to minorities in levels of leadership from their executive board on down. And so we went to Janet Tilly, which I know all of us know who she is, and basically kinda shared some concerns. And so this conference, I'm excited that they're gonna be rolling out on the opportunity and this is open for anyone, so any Board Member, please attend. But the main focus is to be able to bring attention to educational gaps and how do they exist? And then what can we do to address them? Also, basically sharing our lived experiences as persons of color of what it's like to be the first. Because many of us are the first that are in districts, especially when it comes to just serving in this space. And what is that experience like? And so being able to have that conversation. And so I'm welcoming you all to join us so that y'all can kind of be part of that conversation and just that experience as this thing is rolling out and as MSBA is supporting this type of work. Since this is something fresh and new during the conference. Also, I basically say that because we had a planning meeting. So that was something that I did to be able to play, participate in. A quarterly Lee Summit Partnership Meeting, which is the partnership that the school district has with the city. And so me, myself, Dr. Buck, and then also City Manager Dunn, and Dunning. And then also Mayor Bear. We basically meet just to kind of touch bases on some of the things that we've learned in closed session or that we've talked about. That's kind of where they originate and then they branched out to the Board of Education. And so they basically do that quarterly. Also, the CAC meeting, which was a great meeting, I'm loving the way that that partnership is. The community, we had, I'm gonna say at least 40, 50 individuals in that room. And so the desire that we had as a Board to really broaden the individuals that serve on that committee, it's working. And there is a wide range of voices that's in that room, some are in this room. And so I'm looking forward to see what really comes out of that. Part of the conversation was them being tasked with the early childhood. Us being able to provide that early childhood education for our students and they'll be presenting to us very soon. Also, Miller Park Homecoming, I always look forward going out to Miller Park for that barbecue. That was a special opportunity because I got to obviously see the elevator that was installed on the original Miller Park Building. The building that is brand new, which is gonna be our great building. They're excited out there. And they really, every person that I spoke with, they were like, please tell the Board thank you for making us a focus. One of the staff persons even said this, said that there used to be a time where they were not even included on like the website and things of that nature and they truly feel included. And so they appreciate what this Board is doing and so I'm just passing those words off. The principal there, he shared another story with me and I just think that it's worthy of the Board to know this. There was a student that has been at Miller Park for over five years. And that student this year was able to transition to his home high school. And that's the work that we're doing. And I think that it's important because we can hear so many negative things or so many things or opportunities that we have as a district. And that's true, right? There's still opportunities that we have as a district, but we're doing great work. And we need to celebrate the stories and the things that we're doing as a district. And so that's why I'm bringing that forth to the full Board. And then also, the English Language Learners, Board Member Garrett, she explained it, it was fascinating. It was great to see the food. I thought I was gonna just kind of snack and then go home. I think I end up, I think I got a picture of me with three plates. Where Dr. Carlson said, here, you can have my table, you can have the table. So Dr. Carlson even shifted, but the food was great. And so I, I'm like, how do we really open this up to the entire community? To be able to see how diverse our community are? Because so often, when we talk about diversity, we always just look at white and black. And we're so much more diverse than just that. And then to see our kids that are growing with their languages and being able to just experience what they experience is fascinating. And we need to share those things even far and wide as a district. I am wrapping up. Other than that, today, I got, had a little early start this morning, so I also visited Underwood today. So I got to see their Y Care, also got to see their choir, so the kids come in for choir early. And I mean, you're talking about at least 60 or 70 kids, 70 kids that are singing and dancing and just bright bushy tails at 8 o'clock in the morning. So that was exciting to see. And then also went over to Bernard Campbell and kind of played some ball with the kids in the gym. And so, that's what I did. We're doing great work, let's continue the work. that's what I did. We're doing great work, let's continue the work. And I'm going to turn it back over to you, Dr. Buck.
All right. Next item is in the Items Decision Finance, 5.01 Transfer of Funds.
Do I have a motion?
Sorry, I was waiting for Board Docs to catch up. I move to approve the transfer of $3,262,766.10 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. Let's move on.
Next item is 5.02 Treasurers Report and Payment of Bills.
I move to approve the Treasurer's Report and the Payment of the Bills.
Do you have a motion?
She did, second.
All right, all in favor? Raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
Next item is 6.01 through 6.07 Items Decision Consent.
All right. Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, all in favor, second?
Second.
All right. Vice President Foley, all right, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, none opposed?
Next item is 8.01 Facility Services Program Evaluation. I believe Kyle Gurrell's going to come up. Dr. Shelton is not here today.
Can everybody see that okay? Is that good? Hope to make it a little larger. Well, just get going. Thank you very much for the time tonight to present Facility Services Program Evaluation. We have had a really busy last few years and a lot of really exciting things that I'm excited to share with you. So, really the heart of our department is our, is our leadership staff and I am just so grateful to have the group of people to work with that I do and just great qualified people that, that care really passionately about creating good learning environments for kids. So, let's scroll down. So, the size and shape of the district has changed a little bit over the last few years. We're now up to over 3.6 million square feet of space. We have 711 acres and a little over 2.7 million square feet of roof, so. Lot to keep track of. Skip over responsibilities a little bit. You guys know what we do. We do maintenance, custodial, design and construction management, energy management, safety, security, a lot of hats and a lot of great people to manage it. So, our strategic alignment falls in place with capital project planning. We are right now working on closing out the 2020 bond issue. If you look at the Board Report this month, there's about $2.7 million left that's not encumbered or spent. So, that's been a huge endeavor to, to work through all those projects. We're working through final punch lists right now on, on Lee Summit High School and Paradise Park. So, we are also currently in the process of working on a potential 2025 bond issue. So, it's really exciting. This evening, I attended one of the building level meetings at Greenwood and it's just really exciting, meeting with community members and just talking about potentials, potential things that could come. So, we'll be bringing that to you for review a couple of times here in the next month and then for final approval later this winter. So, the other item that is, you know, a bit of a challenge this year is we're working through the new lead state law that's out there. And we do not have our official results yet, but have already started with some early feedback from our consultant, started doing some remediation efforts. And so, good stuff, kids. We, you know, want to make sure that we've got the best possible drinking water that we can. So, in facilities, we think about our budget in three categories. We have an operating budget of approximately $2.3 million. So, that's everything from all the contract services to, to maintain and inspect kitchen hoods and fire extinguishers, down to buying paper towels and hand soap in our buildings. Then we have the capital budget. Capital budget goes up and down. And as you know, we're evaluating how the potential bond funding over a cycle, potentially a five-year cycle, can help support the long-range capital plan. This year, we've got just under $15 million budgeted and a big chunk of that is in a couple of projects that are planned out there for roofing and mechanical. So, the 2020 bond issue, the bond budget is the third portion that we manage. As I said earlier, 261.5 million was our total resource and we are getting right down to the end.
Kyle, before you go on, you mentioned the 2.7 million. So, I just want to point out that we used to have a, a part of the, of the bond that was a much larger amount going to capital projects, existing capital maintenance, that we lowered that number when we decided to do Miller Park and geometry construction at the three high schools, two new builds and one renovation addition at Lee Summit High. So, that number got smaller. Now, if we, this 2.7 million, if it doesn't need it as we finish up these projects, we'll move back and then recoup some of those funds we took away for those additional projects.
So, we have a capital projects process that has felt really good between us and our building administrators. They send out a survey every fall. That's going to be going out here in the next couple of weeks. And we take the time to go out and personally walk every building with every administrator. And it's great for us. We have so much square footage that, you know, it's just hard to get out and look and see everything. So, we keep a running spreadsheet, can't do everything every year. And it's been a good communication tool for our administrators so we can keep track of items that get deferred. All right, I'm going to skip down here. So, the goals of our department, first one, as we talked about, capital projects and long-range planning. You know, we have a pretty involved capital plan, a lot of different categories that we manage. Some of the items that we got done this last year, we installed new flooring in 146 classrooms and educational spaces. We had a couple of really big epoxy projects, did half of the corridors at Summit Lakes and the corridors at Great Beginnings. And we'll go back next year and do Phase Two and finish some of those up. We have fifteen elementary gyms now with the new Brazilian athletic flooring. It's called TerraFlex. We have three gyms that are remaining now. We've been doing, trying to do a couple of those a year. So, we're getting close to, to the end on those projects. So, as I mentioned earlier, the roofing and mechanical projects that we have out in design right now, we're going to be bidding them shortly. We've got Bernard Campbell is the next project on our list and then roofing at Mason and Lee Summit High. We completed the roofing and mechanical projects at Hazel Grove. I mean, I think everybody remembers the long journey and the supply chain issues that we had there. It took almost two years to get all the products and to finish roofing at Lee Summit West and Hazel Grove and Paradise Park. So, excited to have those completed. West has still got just a few pieces of flashing to install. Asphalt playgrounds, we've been on a hard push over the last four or five years to get all of our playgrounds resurfaced. And so, we're getting two to four of them done every year. And we've only got four left, so excited about that. So, a lot of other projects, my coworkers would be really mad if I went through all of them because we'd be here really late, so. New fire alarm at Underwood, the most exciting project of the, of the summer. And a library renovation at Lee Summit West. We work with our library, librarian team to choose a library every year. There's been times we've done two, but Lee Summit West was up this year and really some amazing changes with just some simple projects. Carpet, paint, new furniture and creates really new, great space for the kids. The corridors at Great Beginnings, got rid of all the old VCT floor tile and it was original to the building and installed new epoxy. Have you guys seen, you know, Lee Summit High, it's a big project, yeah? Anyway, yeah, what an amazing transformation. We don't want to talk about it. The Robotics and Geometry and Construction Programs, you know, they're in full swing. They've even started building some things in GIC and the Robotics Clubs are loving their new space too. Paradise Park, that was mentioned earlier. You know, you know, we're excited to have a dedication ceremony here coming up. Haven't set a date yet, but it'll be exciting to show that building off. Miller Park, we finally set some dates to move into the new flight building. We're going to, we have a slow transition and I think we know that, you know, Kelly Twinner is just so thoughtful with, with having planned transitions for those students. We're setting some time to have, I believe it's a week, almost two weeks, where he can slowly transition and get kids used to the building. And then we're going to do some more formal move-in activities over Thanksgiving. So, it's coming up fairly soon. And then at that time, we'll start renovating the one-story building and get that ready for the great program. All right, so the next item, our goal, preventive and reactive maintenance of facilities. We've been really excited about the new work order system that we implemented. Just started using it this summer and have received over 4,800 work orders already. And so, it's just a constant stream and the guys do a great job of keeping up with it. We are working on, and one of our goals with the Board is to provide some good processes for reporting, you know, completion, status on time, that type of thing. So, we're working with our vendor to get that reporting worked out and we'll start doing that probably in the next month or two. Biggest work order items, if you mind, and they are easier ones, keys and fobs. And we get a lot of those at the start of the school year, manage those. But our carpentry department, they process a lot of work orders. They've had 800 work orders just since this summer. So, energy management is another, another thing that we're going to be tracking. As you can see, our, our cost of our utilities has gone up significantly this year. We're up 7.4% and largely due to rate increases. You can see our gas bill doubled from last year, almost double. So, you know, we're going to be tracking that. You'll see later in my goals, we're going to look for some software to help us automatically import our utility bills so we can, we can track a little more efficiently. But that's something we will be keeping our eye on. So, safety and security, we've had a lot of things moving there. The, the greatest thing is our access control and security, the camera system, nearly complete. We just have a few little finishing touches that have made some great improvements that our administrators have really appreciated across the district. We are still working through our keying and, you know, are doing that as much as we can in-house so we can have a slow, planned, deliberate process for rekeying the district. All right, so what are our strengths and our celebrations? As I mentioned earlier, you just can't find a better group of people. I mean, our, our department, we just have so many great people in our department that just truly an honor to work with all of them. And so, we appreciate the support and, you know, Lee Summit School District has always supported and understood the value of having quality people and, and the resources behind our capital plan to maintain our facilities. So, we're very involved with the Missouri School Plant Managers Association. That's our state organization for all the school facility people. And we have been on our Board for a very long time. We started a certification program that Desi has helped us with and endorses. And we now have twelve people who've gone through that program. It's thirty-three hours of training in eight different core areas. And really proud of the guys for taking the initiative and doing some advanced professional development. So, the learning environment changes, that's what I get really excited about. It's just so fun to see how all of our new space can be used from Lee Summit High and East Trails, Mason and Paradise Park. So, it's been a, a great thing for the kids and we're going to continue through this year doing some post-occupancy evaluation. We've already done that at Mason. And we want to make sure that we know what's working well. And we know a lot of things are working great, but we also know that, you know, there's things that, and opportunities for change. So, we want to make sure that, and then a next round of projects that we can make any adjustments that are needed. So, staff shortages. We have 215 people in our department and, you know, last year, we were down on average probably about thirty custodians, which, which was a real challenge. And so, we talked about a couple of months ago, a contract with a temporary staffing company was entered into. And we, over the summer, were down around twenty or so custodians. And just recently, pinnacle has really started kicking in. And I should have looked at the number because Marlene just sent a spreadsheet. I think it's eight or nine or so people that they've got either already started or in the process. So, really seeing some positive gains there. They're finding us some people that we can use and hire in three months full-time if they want to jump over onto our, on our payroll. So, we're excited about the, the positive change there. And it's going to be good for our employees just to feel like they've got some help. All right, so, the items that we're going to be working on in the future, just real quick. As I mentioned earlier, communication of status of work orders. We're working on ASERT training options, looking to more aggressively train new staff as they come into our buildings. And indoor air quality is still a focus. You know, we're, we're post-pandemic, but it is still something that we're looking at and evaluating routinely. Staffing efficiencies. Our lead water changes is going to be a real challenge this year. And, and our operations manual is another thing that we're working on to define and, and track our, our critical activities. So, as I mentioned earlier, utility tracking software is going to be something we're going to look into. And, and then working through design standards and planning for the next bond issue. So, that's it. I hope it didn't take too much time, but I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Board, is there any questions, comments? Dr. Johnson?
Just curious, are we, can we do solar power and is that something we've looked into or do we have considered in our roof square footage?
We can look at that. Typically, people line up solar projects with re-roofing projects so that way you've got your life cycle balanced out. Dr. Shelton and I actually have a meeting with the company. We had a meeting last week that was going to be a part of it. We ran out of time. So, we are rescheduling with the company right now to, to look at options for that.
And speaking with UCM the other day, obviously what incentivizes for, for private citizens, there's, there's, you know, a tax rebate with that. Well, we, we don't pay taxes as a public entity, but you can sell those. So, UCM is doing that on a major building. You can sell those tax credits to other entities and, and still benefit from the tax credit as a, as a public entity.
Good question. Vice President Foley?
Thank you. Okay, a few months ago, we set some priorities.
A few months ago, we set some priorities and goals for the district around facilities, and I heard you mention two of them tonight, but there was one that I just wanted to check in on, which was about performing a district-wide accessibility audit on all our facilities. Could you speak a little bit to that and kind of what that is looking like at the moment?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. We actually have an RFP that is on Island Wave, our purchasing system. It is advertised currently, and so it'll be out for a couple of weeks. We'll evaluate our responses and, and bring a recommendation to the board, I would say, in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Board Member Haslick?
You always promote me.
Sorry.
It feels so good. Okay, so, it's getting late. So first, I actually just wanna say thank you for the very detailed report, and I know that we have a lot of buildings and a lot of square footage to cover, and you guys do a really great job. In fact, just, just to add a boy for you, is that whenever I would go and do school tours, one of the things that I would ask our principals is, you know, if you have issues in your facilities, is everything getting taken care of in a timely fashion? And I've never heard anybody tell me no, and they've always said really great things about our, our team here, so thank you. Question about the work orders. So, I know we are only a couple of months into the school year with your new system. So if there's about a thousand open orders that are just kind of waiting on getting filled, is that because of materials or staffing, or what's kind of typically the holdup with some of those, since there's so many?
Yeah, work order status is a difficult thing, because there's so many different categories. So some, some work orders get put in that, a lot of our painting work orders, we, we let those build up and we wait for capital projects. We'll do them in the summer, since it's hard to paint during the school year. There are a number that are related to waiting on parts, you know, mechanical parts or electrical. And then there's, there are a lot that, that we just can't get to. You know, we've got, we've got forty, I believe, four maintenance people, but about a dozen of them are in the ground shop. So, you know, the guys, it's, there's a heavy workflow for the guys, and they do their best to prioritize and, and keep that up. So, we also, in all fairness, we do have some work orders. We, we imported a bunch of data from our old system, and we do have some data that's not quite right, we're still cleaning up, that is exaggerating that number a little bit.
Well, still getting to like thirty-eight hundred work orders is pretty impressive, so that's no slight. Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
I have one more question. So, in the report, there was mention of the ACERT training, and I know that we as a board have talked about, or at least brought up, what's the plan for making sure that our subs get trained? And I didn't see any mention of that, so is that something that's still in discussion on how to address that and making sure that those individuals who come in our buildings know what to do?
Yes, the substitutes, both from Kelly or any other source, will be included in that plan.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. I just have one question as a follow-up. When we talked about our staff and utilizing the staffing service, obviously I know there's many reasons why companies use staffing services as ours, because of like kind of the try it before you buy it? Is that the reason? Or is it because we are having trouble ourself hiring? And if so, then are we looking at other avenues for us to be able to do direct hiring versus utilizing the staffing company?
Yeah, it was initially just purely due to the, the trouble we've had attracting and finding people, getting them to apply. Pinnacle has, the company we're using, they have the ability to create some other nice, you know, options for people. They can pay them more frequently, they can provide gas cards, they're giving them some other little benefits that, that pull people in. What we're, what we are excited about though is that opportunity to, to try some people out and make sure that, you know, they're great employees and we can, we can offer them employment if that's something that fits them. With Pinnacle, they just have to work five hundred and twenty hours, just three months, before we can hire them without penalty. So, that's a really, really nice benefit in the contract.
And when it comes to pay, is the pay gonna be comparable, or is it more or less than what they're being paid through Pinnacle?
Yeah, their, Pinnacle is going to pay their employees step one of our custodial scale, so they'll be paid the same amount as a step one custodian in our district.
And then if they're hired permanent, but they've had experience prior to, are we gonna then honor that for those individuals?
We have allowed direct experience and step placement when people come in, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Next item is Items for Information Ritten Reports, nine point oh one to nine point oh three.
All right. Do we have any discussion or conversation around our written reports? No? Okay.
And our last item is ten point oh one, Public Comments, and I don't believe we have anybody signed up.
That is correct. All right.